There we go. Just wanted to welcome everybody to the Worcester School Committee meeting. And apologies for being late. I know a lot of people have been waiting here, and so I apologize for that. And we will stand, if possible, for the Pledge of Allegiance to National Anthem, if you can stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Could do that. Okay. So we will, with the superintendent, the court will have to take care of that. Okay. I think Nico will. You can arrange it, right? The court will arrange it with Nico Van Jolly to change that for the school committee. Okay? And I wish everybody else would be that fast to leave the room sometimes, but they did a great job, so thank you, and I appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Member Clancy, here. Vice Chair Johnson. Member Kamara.
I'm here.
Member Mailman.
General Kamara is here, too.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough, here. Member O'Connell, over.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
Here. Okay, first item we have is from executive session. Pursuant to action taken in executive session, move to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the NAGE R1-16 cafeteria workers for the contract duration of August 26, 2021, through August 25, 2023. Roll call.
Member Clancy, yes. Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member O'Connell, over.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Yes. We have the consent decree on section E. Roll call. I thought we had to do a roll call.
I believe, Mr. Chair, we need to.
Amendment, so January, December 15th, as amended.
Member Clancy, yes. Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member O'Connell, over.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty. Yes. Okay, we are on public comment. First, we have recognition. So we have recognized Brian Allen, Sarah Consalvo, Nancy Bumstrum, Ashke Gural, Rashkama, Mohammed Siddiqui, Ivana Thun, Liam Young, Leah Limbert, for the 10th Executive Association of School Business Officers International Meritorious Budget Award for fiscal year 2023 Worcester Public Schools budget. Mr. Foley, I just want to thank you for being here today, former school committee member. And without overturning, Ms. Novak.
Mr. Chair, just point of order, I think we may have skipped section G. Not that I don't want to get to the recognition.
I figure we'd do this first.
All right. So we're taking it under order.
Since we have people waiting for.
Fair enough. Thank you. Can we ask people that we're honoring to come forward, please? Because I know that I know who you are, but I know that not all of my colleagues necessarily do. I think it's okay for them to come up here, isn't it?
I'm right in the front.
They can come on up here. I think the mic's on. Yep.
Mr. Allen, you can join us, too, if you'd like.
Mr. Allen, your name's in the item. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no more meticulous standard to meet than an award that's given by people who live their lives in spreadsheets, having to account for every nickel. This award is neither earned nor given lightly once, never mind 10 times in a row. It wasn't until I joined ASBO a few years ago that I really began to appreciate that the standard applied here isn't about the people whose lives are lived within the budget realm, but it's about the rest of us, the end users. ASBO, to quote from the MBA section, says, "The award is for an accessible and accurate budget to build trust and clearly communicate with stakeholders." Every budget that this committee has passed that has received the Meritorious Budget Award has been constitutionally underfunded by millions of dollars. We have passed budgets with negative inflation rates, with phased-in-and-out federal supplemental funds, with layoffs, and with growths and additions. In every one of those budgets, I have been confident, whether I was on this committee at the time or not, that I knew where the budgets were coming from and where they were going because of the clarity in the budget presentation. And last week, during a meeting, I pulled out my phone when I was asked a question. When I was asked, "Do you need to take a call?", I said, "No," because what I was doing was I was screenshotting an image of the page of the budget that answered the question and sending it to them on the spot. Rare is a budget document that is still that useful six months after its adoption. Ours is every single year. While we rightly focus here on the classroom, often we don't realize, and by the way, this is something that I learned from Mr. Foley, that until some of the invisible work supporting the classroom stops, how much depends on it. We, of course, had a vivid illustration of this when our transportation stopped being dependable. But behind all of that, behind the buses and the boilers and the Chromebooks and the lunches, lies the work of these people before us. Because if they aren't there every day quietly doing their jobs with fidelity and with integrity, all of the rest of it doesn't happen. All of the work of the district rests on their work. I do want to mention two people in particular. The first is Sarah Consalvo, our budget director. Most of us, I hope, know, not only that she is excellent at her job, but I want to note that she brings to her administrative responsibilities the enthusiasm and the energy of a good coach. As the ultimate extension of that, Ms. Consalvo wrote a piece for School Business Affairs, the monthly magazine for school business officers, in November entitled "Our District's Journey to the MBA: Urging Others to Work on Getting Their District Budgets to Meritorious Budget Award Status." In the piece, which has a surprising number of exclamation points, given the topic, Ms. Consalvo writes, "I would be remiss not to acknowledge the hours dedicated to this endeavor. However, I truly believe that the effort required to build each year's budget results in a better connection with the community, creates greater efficiencies within the financial division, and provides a substantial return on our investment. I couldn't agree more." We also need to acknowledge Mr. Allen, even if he refuses to stand up, whose idea this was in the first place. As I've said before, the standard of excellence that he holds for others is only outstripped by the standard he holds for himself. And I have learned, in my current professional capacity, that his name, and by virtue of that, that of the Worcester Public Schools financial management, is a watchword for exemplary work across the state. I'm only glad to finally have local leadership that appreciates that and him. Thank you for the work that you have done to get us here, and may we please have many more?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for those comments, Member O'Connell, over. Good to see you, Mr. Foley. Is this on? So I've been here, this is the 10th year, I've been here and recognized, so I appreciate that, but it's about time we actually recognize the people who do all the work. And so to actually meet the people from Finance and Operations, from the Budget Office, from Sarah, who attends all of the standard keeping meetings, all who you know, Liam, Mohammed, Ivana, and then Akshay and Nancy and Leah, who are missing tonight, certainly appreciate this recognition. We've taken this seriously, we've actually codified meeting the standard within Policy DA, which is our policy management directive. And so to your request, it is our intention, through that policy, to continue with the highest standard in budget preparation and transparency, so that better decisions can be made for the schools. So people know exactly where dollars are being spent, and we are accountable, as a district, to where those are spent. So whether it's quarterly reports, end-of-year reports, the audits, and the actual budget preparation, these are the folks that actually do the day-to-day work for the district to make sure that our $500 million is spent wisely and transparently. So thank you for this recognition, again, for the 10th time, and to meet and see the great team in the Budget Office. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Foley, you want to say anything? You're all set. Don't be going away, we're not finished. So, Mr. Foley, you're all set? So thank you for being here tonight, though. And we do have a certificate of merit presented to each of the people who's here tonight from the Association of School Business Officers International for having received the Meritorious Budget Award for its fiscal year 2023 budget. And Ivana, congratulations. Thank you. Mohammed. And of course, Sarah. And Brian has something else to hang on his wall, but Mr. Allen, congratulations. You guys want to get the picture? Look on the floor. Jack, you want to take? Maybe we get the school committee. One, two, three. Is Brian there? Or you want to have this? Yep. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack is leaving, Joe. Joe. Jack is leaving. Jack is leaving.
Mr. Foley, we will see you at the next meeting. Okay, we're on held items, we're going to go back to GB 3-23. You want to do this one first? Okay. So we're asked to take one thing, one item out of order. Oh, we have someone who wants, okay. We have someone who wants to speak on public comment, I know needs to probably leave. We'll do public comment now, come on. Anybody want to speak? You're more than welcome. Yeah, you can speak, anybody wants to speak. Give your names to the residents.
Hello, my name is Anna Lito, I'm a resident of Worcester. I'm here to speak on behalf of Streamin' for Athletics. I'm a mother of a South High student, but I'm also an employee at North High School. I feel like this is important, especially because me, growing up, my mother worked three jobs, could never come to our sporting events. It would have been great, one, to hear her talk about my sports, but it's also important, for example, North High just experienced, Doherty has a small gym, Burnco has a small gym, Maine-South has a small gym. Our parents were shut out of a game because of capacity. I, luckily enough, have the ability to stream from my cellphone, so when I do South High football, I stream from my phone, so parents that need to work, can't make it to games, are able to still watch their plays. Because as much as it's important, kids feel it when their parents can at least talk about it, like, hey, I seen you play. I was working, but I did join the stream, I joined the live. Same thing with North High basketball. When we go to smaller gyms, I stream them from my phone, parents text me, find me on Facebook, hey, is anybody streaming? I feel like it's very important, especially for children, to know that, yes, they're working, but their parents are still supporting them and still watching them. I feel like it's a big deal, because a lot of these kids feel like their parents can't support them or can't be there and just be able to watch and be like, you did a great job. Yeah, children and kids hear a great job from their coaches, from other parents, but to hear it from your parent by itself means a lot to a child. I had a situation where I almost couldn't make it to my son's game, and I can hear it in his voice, what do you mean, Mom? You're not going to make it. He made it to Nationals for youth football, and due to my pregnancy and how far along it was, I wasn't able to travel. But once I said, "I'm gonna pay for you to watch that stream," he was like, I've never missed a game of football for him. I have kids on the football team, a parent doesn't show up. And it's not because they don't want to show up, it's because their work schedule doesn't allow them to show up. So I feel like if we really decide and say yes to this streaming, we'll see a difference in these kids. That's all.
No, well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciate it. We'll get to you in one second. Anybody else want to speak at the end?
Hi, my name is Fiana Jatansing from 37 County Street. My daughter Vienna is at North High, and the thing I want to speak about is similar to, I think it's the same thing that Ms. Mailman was going to talk about, the held item. My daughter is very smart. She's in a Chapter 74 program at North High, but she was told she can't also do AP because of scheduling conflicts. If the children are smart enough to be able to do AP and Chapter 74 and early college, they should be able to do it, but because of the way the schedule is at North High, they can't do multiple avenues. They can only do one or the other, which is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Name, residence and item number.
Hi, my name's Melinda Martin, I'm a resident of Worcester. I'm actually on a petition. I'm here on behalf of the educators of Norback Avenue School. We have a para educator right now whose husband is suffering from leukemia. He was misdiagnosed in hospitals in Worcester, and she's running out of sick time. She's only been with the district since December of 2019. She's not yet eligible to join the sick bank because our current contract says that you have to have 40 days to join the sick bank. The educators of Norback have raised over 63 days that we'd like to donate as she needs them. However, it's a little, it's a different situation, because she's not out continuously, she's still working, she just needs, like, and right now she has one day left. She needs one day, maybe every week or so, to take her husband to Dana Farber in Boston for treatment. She has a child that's in high school, so that child can't miss school to take her dad, which I think would be too stressful anyways. So because he's receiving blood transfusions and other treatments, he can't drive himself and then drive himself home, and they're not admitting him. So I know this needs to go to a committee, but I'd like the committee to please consider these donated days, they're like 63 days. Again, I'm not sure she'll need them all. She wants to stay working, I think it's, according to her, it's good for her to be able to come in and see her students and work with them. And again, I know this is not the norm for sick bank days, but these educators have donated willingly over 63 days for her to be able to get her full paycheck, but able to be able to care for her husband as well. And thank you for letting me speak early, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Okay. Andrew, I think we're all set online. Okay. Anybody else want to speak on the item? Seeing nobody else, we'll close that portion, we'll go to 3-36. Can I hang on one second, Paul? To consider approve the request to donate sick days for a pre-educator at Norback Ave, we're going to send that to governance, and you'll have a hearing quickly on that. So motions to send it to governance, all those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Thank you. And then we'll go back to petition 3-35, to consider Worcester Regional Research Bureau's latest report, Governing for Excellence: Worcester Public Schools' Evolution in Governance. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, committee. I'm Paul Matthews, I'm the executive director and CEO of the Worcester Regional Research Bureau. As all of you know, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, independent policy research organization that issues reports throughout the year on a wide range of topics. We've been in operation for 37 years and have issued a whole host of reports on education topics, as well as voter turnout, broadband, municipal administration, public finance, a whole host of other issues. So I would be remiss if I did not credit Brian Allen and his team for the tremendous job they do, and I will not attempt to attest to how important that is to outside parties, because it's almost immeasurably important. But as someone who utilizes the budget immeasurably frequently, I really want to credit the entire team for the work they do. I am, however, on the agenda, and I have a bit of a unique role, in that I'm really here, and I appreciate the forum, but not really to address all of you, given the fact this report is entitled "Governing for Excellence: The Worcester Public Schools' Evolution in Governance." It details the rules changes your body adopted, and it detailed improvements that have happened in recent years, including the superintendent's reorganization and a host of other issues. I'm really here to address the public, not only people who are here, but people online viewing. I really want to say, please go online and check out the report. All of you are very well aware that the school committee is shifting to six districts. I don't need to educate all of you. I think, however, the voting public would benefit from the opportunity to review the report, which details the school facilities in each district, as well as the other key elements of the new district orientation. I also want to say to people at home, please go online, there's an interactive dashboard, so you can put in your address, you can see where you vote. If you have not been voting, please vote, but you can see your voting location, you can see your school committee district, and, incidentally, as someone who has one public school graduate among my kids and one public school student, you can find out if the schools they're attending are, in fact, in a different district, which is entirely possible. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this point, I thank the committee for your work evolving the rules and governance of the Worcester Public Schools, and it did not go unnoticed, particularly, I would note, the student representative, who is sitting with all of you, and the institutionalization of having their perspective at the table. So happy to answer questions, if needed.
I think we're good. Will I give them a hand for that? Good job, Paul.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to accept applause, too. Thank you very much.
The motions are accepted, the file, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We're going back to GB 3-23 and 3-24. Request that administration review scheduling options for Chapter 74 programs in Worcester Public School, comprehensive high schools, in effort to increase shop time, more closely mirror Worcester Technical High School's schedule of alternating between one week of shop and one week of classroom instruction, and also receive an update on the outsourcing of mental health services to external providers to meet the needs of the wellness of our students, including total number of organizational applicants, which schools have a serious provider, and what services will be rented per school. My understanding is that we sent this to administration, and this has been brought back because of the updates, and there's been one update, who is provided, so if anybody has any questions, if not, we can just send it back to the administration. Is that fine? Then also, we're going to get future updates as needed. Correct, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, so this was actually filed at the last committee meeting. There was some questions on it, we'll bring those back to the committee with answers in a what's happening update.
Okay. Okay, so everybody all set? Any questions? All those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Okay, we did recognitions, we did public comment, we did, what did I miss? No, I didn't, collectively. Those are collectively. Nope, not wrong. Okay. Okay, we did 3-6, we are on Report of the Superintendent from here anywhere together, Advancing Multilingual Learner Success. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you through the chair, as the team comes up. So tonight, committee, and mayor, and our listening audience, we are bringing forward an update on how, what's been going on, or our current work and past work in advancing multilingual learner success, and what are some plans moving forward. I want to thank the team who will be presenting, so we've got Dr. Morris, our Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning, Carmen Melendez, our Director of Multilingual, and Aaron, and I forgot your last name, Aaron, but I didn't know you were going to be presenting, so I apologize, our Assistant Director of Multilingual. I also want to thank, again, Sari Kiriassis, who is doing a fabulous job in really beautifying our presentations, making them very visibly appealing, and of course, Dr. Anadare, who pulls all the data together. So, committee, as you're listening, there's some pieces that we'd like you to listen for and to consider potential policy or fiscal implications, not that we have to have those for tonight, but just as we start to move forward in the budget season, thinking about what might be some implications when we listen for and think about our multilingual scholars. And so most specifically, want you to listen to and listen for feedback around the, first and foremost, who our students are that we're talking about. So please listen to the actual language levels of our students and the majority of the students that we're speaking about, because that has implications to program. Also want you to listen for, then, instructionally, what we're doing to move forward on the language proficiency as our students are acquiring English, while also looking at the heritage language or their primary language as an asset, and what we're doing to further elevate that, and then finally, the primary language or the heritage language as an asset, not just for the child in front of us, but their families as well. And so when we share not only our current... And so when we share not only our current practices, but what we plan on doing in the future, thinking about it through that lens of building language proficiency in English while honoring and really elevating the heritage or primary language of the child who we work with and their family, and seeing that as an asset, and what might be policy implications and potential fiscal implications, okay? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Morris, and she will lead us through the rest.
Through the chair, thank you for having us here this evening. As Dr. Manares introduced our team, I'll be kicking us off, but I'll be handing it over to my esteemed colleagues. So the outcomes for today are that we share with you the current state of the multilingual program and learners in the Worcester Public Schools, and also we will be providing some information about what the plans are in the future to develop and to grow to the desired state for our multilingual learners. So our why. So tonight, you're going to hear a little bit more about our multilingual program and our plans to improve and enhance what we currently do and what we currently offer. This is a major focus of our current work and also our future work. We also need to acknowledge that this work is just not the responsibility of the multilingual department. It is the work of the entire district, every department, every school, every school leader, teacher. We are all charged to work together collectively to support our multilingual learners. Our why. Well, we believe that all students have the right to an exceptional, high-quality education, and we also believe that by continually improving our multilingual practices, services, and programs, we will lift our overall district. You'll learn a little bit more about some of our percentages, but six out of 10, about six out of 10 of our students, their first language is not English. Therefore, we must preload, we must account and plan intentionally to leverage these best practices in all classrooms, as good multilingual practices are good for all learners. We're going to be championing efforts to excel academically, develop multilingualism, embrace diverse identities, and civically engage in local and global communities. We will champion educational equity, and we will work to provide an overall framework for academic excellence for all multilingual students and all students in the Worcester Public Schools. So I will be handing this off to my colleagues, and the next set of information you will be hearing from is from Erin Goldstein, and she's going to share some of the information about the current state of our multilingual students in the Worcester Public Schools.
Before we hand it over to Ms. Goldstein, I'm going to share a little bit about who our students are. Good evening to everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. So in this next slide, it gives you a picture of our students. We have 24,327 scholars, and as you see on the left, we have a big diversity of students, different ethnicities represented. Here we have 60% of African-American students, 6% Asian, 45% Hispanic, and 20.2 Native American, and 26% white. Now, we know that this diversity is one of the gems of this district, and we want to embrace, as it has been said, this diversity in our programming, in our approaches to instructional practices. As you notice here, our biggest subgroup are the Hispanics, which are half of our students. On the right, you're going to see different breakouts on our diverse students. The first, I want to point out the percentage of first language non-English. Students that they're in their home language survey when they registered in the Worcester Public School reported another home language outside of English. We have 14,000 students in that category. Then we go to the low-income category. We have 71% of our students meet that criteria, which is 17,000 of our students. Then our English learners, students that are identified as English learners, we have 30.4% of our students, which is 7,395 students. And then students with disabilities, 20%, which is 4,865. I just want to note here that many of our students fit into many categories. For example, a student who might be Latino might also be an English learner, and also a student with disability, and from a low-income household. Let's look at additional details on our students. Here on the left, again, we reiterate, 30% of our population are identified as English learners. Below that, we see that 5,472 of our students are born outside of U.S., and these are not just English learners. These are all of our students that have been born outside of the United States. Then 1,933 of our English learners are also duly identified as Ls with students with disabilities. 1,286 students are identified as English, as long-term English learners, are long-term Ls, and just to define what long-term L is, a long-term L is defined as having held L status in Massachusetts for at least six years. On the chart on the right, you're going to see the various languages. Obviously, we didn't put all the languages here. We have over 70 languages represented in our district, but here you're going to see what our top 11 home languages are. Spanish, obviously, is number one. Then Portuguese, Tuilie, Vietnamese, Arabic, Albanian, Swahili, Haitian Creole, French, Nepali, and Farsi. I just want to point out, and I'm sure you know this, that on the students that speak Portuguese, that half of those students have been born in Brazil, and that's number doubled in the last few years. So many of you are aware already of all our programs for multilingual students. This is another snapshot of all of those programs. I'm just going to briefly describe them in case there are individuals that do not know about our programs. The first program that we have here listed is Shelter English Immersion, and this is instruction designed so English learners can access grade-level content and develop English proficiency, and these courses are taught by an SEI-endorsed teacher. Then we have our Dual Language Programming, and instruction here is designed so students can access grade-level content and develop English and Spanish proficiency, and students in these programs make connections between languages and develop cross-cultural competency. Then we have our Transitional Bilingual Education, TBE. Students in this program learn most grade-level content in Spanish while they are developing English proficiency. Gradually, students learn more content in English. Once students attain sufficient English proficiency, they transition to, out of the TBE program. Now, we have SEI for students with limited or interrupted formal education, and the acronym for that is LIVE. And this program, students learn content through specialized design instruction that includes experiential learning and individualized English language development. Once students attain sufficient English proficiency, they transition to mainstream SEI. And I wanted to add World Language here, because it's one of the programs that our department oversees. In World Language, students learn a language other than English through meaningful, relevant, and cross-disciplinary content. Current courses include Spanish, French, American Sign Language, and Latin. I just want to point for World Language that even though it's not a program specifically designed for English learners, many of our English learners do benefit from participating in World Language courses, and this branch of our office oversees and leads the work of syllable literacy. And also on the other programs listed above, ESL is a main component of these programs. So this is another slide that breaks down a little bit the participation in our programs. You're going to see here on the left that the majority of our English learners are in an SEI program, so 6,430 students. It's very important to know that, like I've mentioned before, students in this program are taught by both an ESL teacher and an SEI-endorsed teacher, and currently our district has, our percentage of SEI-endorsed teachers is 95. This number also takes into account the SEI program for this live population that I mentioned previously, and we have about 110 students in that program. On the right, you're going to see the breakdown a little bit more by school. And then lastly, we have currently 454 students in our dual-language program. 394 of those are in the elementary program, and 60 in the secondary program. Also, I wanted to note here that we currently have 233 current Ls in our dual-language program, and also I want to know that we currently have 54 students in a transitional bilingual program. So these are our students and the programs they are in, and the services they are receiving.
Good evening. So for this portion of the presentation, I'm going to share some of the data regarding the performance of our English learners, their English proficiency levels, their MCAS scores and achievement levels, as well as their access progress rates. So we start with English proficiency levels. English proficiency levels are scaled on a score from one to six. They're a representation of what students can do in English. They include reading, writing, listening, and speaking scores. So students have subdomain scores, yet they're given one overall composite score, that's a combination of all four of those skills. Do you better understand English proficiency levels? A student at English proficiency level one, or EPL one, is just starting to learn English. So they can use words, phrases, short chunks of language in English, and they need a significant amount of visual and graphic support in order to understand English and to be able to produce English. Moving along the scale, if you get to the middle, a student at English proficiency level three can use mostly general language. They now use more expanded sentences orally and in writing, can write in paragraphs, but they still require some supports, including visual and graphic supports, and additional supports in the classroom, in order to be able to comprehend academic language and to produce language in English. Moving up to a student at EPL five, those students are approaching proficiency of English proficient peers. They now can use more technical language, technical vocabulary within the content areas and across the content areas, and they can produce extended discourse of different text types and genres. We share this, and of course, at EPL six, it's comparable to English proficient peers. We don't see EPL six on here because most students by that, or all students by that level reclassify. They become what are considered former English learners, and they no longer hold that L status. So understanding what students can do at different English proficiency levels is very useful when looking at the data that we're going to share in a moment at MCAS. As you can see here for English proficiency levels two, just a couple things to note. Our elementary schools have more students that are identified as English learners, and many of the students at our English, at elementary have an English proficiency level of one, more than 1,500. Overall, more than 2,000 of the district's multilingual learners or English learners are at EPL one. So the next two slides look at MCAS results. We have shared this data. Dr. Andrade has talked about this data in a previous report of the superintendent, but we're reviewing it here for reference again. MCAS, of course, is one measure of student achievement, and it's not fully representative of what multilingual learners can know and are able to do, but it's an important measure nonetheless. So this chart shows MCAS ELA achievement by English proficiency level. So as can be expected, students at lower English proficiency levels have much more, remember, those are the students who are just starting to learn English, who use, produce words, phrases, chunks of language, and can comprehend words, phrases, chunks of language with significant supports. These students have difficulty meeting expectations on a standardized test in English. However, we see as their English proficiency level increases, they're more able to show what they know in English, and they begin to score at higher levels on MCAS ELA. And again, once they attain English proficiency, like we talked about before, and they reclassify as English learners, and these students do tend to perform at least on par with all students, and actually, in some cases, score higher than other subgroups. This is a similar chart, but this now looks at math achievement, and you see similar trends as what we saw in the MCAS ELA. Though it is a math test, it's not just numbers. There's a lot of English that students must navigate through in order to respond to the questions and understand the questions and to succeed on the assessment. So as is the case in MCAS ELA, we again see that same trend, that students at lower English proficiency levels have more difficulty meeting expectations, but as English proficiency levels increase, students are more likely to be approaching or meeting expectations. And again, as we see in the case of MCAS ELA, when students meet proficiency and reclassify as former Ls, they also tend to perform at least on par with all students, and again, in some cases, better than other subgroups. So finally, this slide looks at English language proficiency progress, and this is measured by Access for Ls. Access for Ls is the state-mandated assessment that's designed to monitor English language development. It assesses reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The state sets progress targets for access for ELLs. Research shows that it takes about five to seven years for students to attain English proficiency, so the state has settled on six years as the expectation, which all students are expected to meet the criteria of reaching English proficiency and be able to then reclassify as former English learners. So these targets are set based on the number of years that students have been an English learner and what their prior scores are. So you'll see in the first chart here, we have the percentage of students who met progress targets for Worcester Public Schools and also for the state. You can see that our trends tend to follow the state in terms of how they've changed over time. As anticipated, the district and the state scores decreased in 2021 due to COVID, but there was some bounce back in 2022. You can also see here in this comparison to the state, something to notice is that the gap between the Worcester Public Schools and state for 2022 is five percentage points. So we haven't closed that gap yet, but that is the smallest gap since 2018. And then in the chart to the bottom of the slides, you can see the progress rates for students in our different multilingual education programs, the programs that Ms. Melendez described before. You can see that students in dual-language meet progress targets in 2022 at a rate of 52%. In Sheltered English Immersion, it's 40% of students meeting progress targets, and in Transitional Bilingual Education, 37% met progress targets in 2022. The final chart at the end looks at students who opt out. So these are students who, when they initially enter the district, they are identified as English learners, but their parents or guardians make the decision to opt out of English learner programs and opt out of ESL instruction. These students, their progress rates are lower than any of the These students, their progress rates are lower than any of the students in the other, in the actual program models. They met progress targets at a rate of 26% in 2022, and that was compared to that overall rate of 38% in the district. So now I'm going to pass it back to Ms. Melendez, who will talk a little bit about how we'll continue to grow and improve in these outcomes.
Thank you. As a district, we are in full motion to ensure we have the best, highest-quality education for our multilingual students. As we mentioned before, this is a district-wide team effort, and everyone is on board. We acknowledge and recognize we have a lot of work to do. The district is taking steps to ensure we have the right conditions and resources for our multilingual students to thrive. In the following slides, you will see the steps for the desired state for our multilingual students. Here in this slide, we want to share WPS's Theory of Action for Multilingual Students. A theory of action is a hypothesis about what will happen if a set of strategies is implemented. So our theory of action for multilingual students is that we believe if we build systems to support schools with asset-based, high-quality instruction for all multilingual students, they will have meaningful access and participate in 21st century education that results in students attaining high levels of English proficiency, mastery of grade-level standards, and opportunities to develop proficiency in multiple languages. So what would you expect to see in education for multilingual students in the Worcester Public Schools? What we want to see in every classroom that we enter this year and moving forward? So there are five things that we outline here as strategies for 2023. Number one is to have a classroom that is culturally responsive. We would like instruction to be asset-based, grounded in what students know, what students already bring to the table, and really leverage the background and the language that the students have. And also establish strong relationships with school staff that values the funds of knowledge that families and students bring, and really leveraging the language and the culture. And ensuring, in a culturally responsive classroom, we want to ensure there's a clear and intentional collaboration with our families. Secondly, we want to make sure that instruction for multilingual students include high academic expectations. And in that, we want to be able to provide high-quality learning experiences with the proper supports that our students have so they could achieve at high levels and eliminate the barriers for various academic opportunities within the system. The third is systematic language development. We want to make sure we, in all content, not just ESL, that there's opportunity for language development. We want to make sure that our students continuously learn and grow in their language as they progress in the Worcester Public Schools. Then the next one is the academic reading and writing conversations. We want to make sure that our students engage and learn to advance in reading and writing, and in bilingual programs, we want them to do that in both languages as equal. And we want to make sure that these students are able to engage in academic conversations and provide that opportunity to interact with peers and with teachers in that manner. And then, lastly, the strategic scaffolding and support is very important to our students, especially at the early years of language development to ensure they're able to access content. So we want to make sure we still maintain high expectations and high support. Just because you're still learning language doesn't mean we lowered our expectations. We want to maintain those high expectations, but be intentional and timely with the kinds of supports the students need to access the curriculum. And then eventually, they will be able to do that without the supports as language develops. In the next slide, we want to showcase the district approaches for improvement. And this is not just for the offices. The whole district is using these approaches to inform our practice and to really improve instruction for all of our students. So we want to highlight here how we're going to use these approaches to enhance and propel our multilingual students. The first category here that we have is that we're going to provide guidance and support for the delivery of high-quality English language instruction. In this goal here, we want to make sure that our students graduate knowing English proficiently, writing, reading, listening, and speaking, while we also nurture and value and give room for the language that they bring and the culture that they bring. We want to make sure that we develop and implement standard-based ESL curriculum and instruction across all levels, as well as integrating language in content instruction. And we have the WIDA 20 standards that are guiding us through that process. And under this category, the last bullet I want to share is that we want to be able to continue and expand sharing the guidance with schools regarding high-quality ESL and effective practices for ESL scheduling and instruction. The second category here is lead district-wide effort to ensure cross-departmental collaboration focus on multilingual students. We believe that by working together and supporting team structures across departments to focus on supporting multilingual students, we will have a deeper impact on instruction and learning for multilingual students. Like he has been said before, this is not just about the work that the multilingual education department can do. Multilingual student success belongs to everyone, every department, and every staff. So we want to make sure under this approach that all educators, regardless of their discipline, share the responsibility for multilingual student success, engage effectively with their families, and value and nurture their linguistic and cultural asset. We know that collectively, we will pursue better outcomes for our multilingual students. Next, we want to provide professional development and job embedded coaching. We want to continue expanding capacity and building skills through knowledge, through PD, in a, which has been, by the way, a main theme from the superintendent's listening session. And we're going to do this in a more expansive way to ensure that our multilingual students are taught by effective, well-prepared, and culturally responsive educators who hold them to high standards and have the materials and the professional learning they need to advance students' academic and linguistic development simultaneously. And we also going to tier this professional development, not just for teachers, but the supporting staff and school leadership. And we continue to strengthen our job-embedded coaching, which schools have. And we also have departmental coaches as well that work with teachers at the school. The next one I want to mention is engage all stakeholders in continuous improvement and progress monitoring. So collaboration should happen with all stakeholders at the table. And this goes beyond the district leadership. It involves school leaders, teachers, community partners, and most certainly, our families. This approach will allow the various voices to be at the table to ensure multilingual students have equitable access to meaningful and rigorous learning opportunities. And last but not least, we want to study and scale promising district practices. And we want to do this by looking at what are the current practices in schools that are yielding positive results and to find ways to scale those to district. And secondly, we want to learn from evidence research best practices that are most impactful for multilingual students and learn from other districts that are finding success with their multilingual students. So, we have a good foundation in the work the district is currently doing, but we believe we are in a good place to elevate the work to the next level. You saw demographics. We are a district with a lot of diversity, a lot of multilingual students. And if we improve the academic and social-emotional outcomes for our students, not only our multilingual students will improve, they'll be impacted, but everyone else will also improve. So what is next for us? So we have a roadmap here, which is going to lead us to the desired state that we want for our multilingual students. So in this roadmap, you're going to see different phases. And in the first phase here, you'll see is that we're going to engage in a program audit. And in this audit, they will look at all of our practices and program models and be able to produce a report to the district to let us know the areas of strength, but also the areas for improvement. And based on that work, we will, in phase two, we will get together a group of people, different individual staff, stakeholders, to be at the table, to be part of a work group, to take what the report, what is written in that report, to then start looking at that report and prioritize the recommendations, which will happen in phase three. In phase four, we will develop an implementation plan based on the recommendations that the work group will prioritize. And lastly, based on all of that work, we will continue to design and continue to build this roadmap for continuous improvement. And we know that we, this is something that doesn't just stop, and we reach a phase, and now we've done it all. We have to continuously be learning and continuously be looking for opportunities for growth and improvement.
So at this time, I'd like to pass the presentation closing over to our superintendent, Dr. Menares.
Thank you. Well, thank you, team. Nicely done. So committee, in the previous report of the superintendent, actually, just last, last time we were together, shared some themes for our strategic plan moving forward and potential goals. And so advancing the multilingual learner's success really begins with the systems work at the district level. That's what these approaches are about, is really scaling up what we have throughout our district in pockets and then making that something that we do throughout the district. The audit will help to do that because we will have externalized coming in and telling us educationally what's working, where are opportunities, and the ones that are working, how do we scale that? So that's part of that systems work that would be part of my, my goal as your superintendent. Building capacity is another part of the systems work, where no matter who is in front of our students in whatever time of the day when it comes to multilingual learners, that they know how to support them in accessing content while developing their language. And then, systems work also includes removing barriers. So the audit will help us to identify what might be some unintentional barriers or policies that we may have as a district that we might want to, may need to change so that our scholars can thrive. And then finally, systems work, all part of that first goal around the district, systems is about monitoring impact. So we heard the continuous improvement. That all fits under that one goal. So as we move forward as, as a district, and when we're presenting Report of the Superintendent, I'm going to keep bringing us back to how this fits into the goal, although I know the goal's not finalized, but we're moving in that direction, right? And so this systems work. I finally want to close by saying our multilingual scholars, they're ready. They're ready to advance. When you look at our data, and most specifically, you look at the proficiency, who our students are, about 3,000 of them are in English learner, is it 3,000? I counted it up. Let me, let me tell you exactly. So English proficiency levels one and two, we have 3,715 total, K-12. English proficiency levels three and up, right? So those are the students who, their English is at a place where if you are conversing with them, you may not even realize that they're identified as English learners, right? So their language is very much advanced in the level of English. Now it's about the academic content in English, as well as maintaining their language. That totals 3,816 scholars. That's a lot of children that we, that are ready for us to accelerate them, and, and they are ready to advance. And so the more we improve upon our district systems and support our educators at our schools, our children will get those outcomes that we know we can. And we have the right team in place. And as was said multiple times, and I'll just put an exclamation point on it, this is not solely the work of our multilingual department. This is the work of the district. And when our multilingual children are thriving, everyone else is thriving with them. So with that, I want to thank the team again, and we open it up to questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Much appreciated. Member McCullough.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the presentation. And I appreciate, again, another well-put-together visual for us as well. I know, member Kamara always comments, the charts are very helpful, so it's great to see things in a visually aesthetic way as well. I had a few questions. I appreciate the whole taking a look at everything and doing the audit because I think to the superintendent's point, we know we can do better, and we're going to get there, and I appreciate that for our multilingual learners. I have specific questions regarding dual-language and how our current dual-language school and programs are going. As far as, you know, we began with La Familia last year. It's the second year now. Do we continue to see progress there? And are students that are continuing to go on through middle school and high school able to access the opportunities to dual-language programs through the chair?
What's that one?
Through this year, to member McCullough. Thank you for the question. So our programs are growing. As you know, we started way back. We built new opportunities for the expansion of dual-language program. Woodland Academy One Way Dual-Language Program, pre-K, La Familia, and then the middle school and the secondary programs. So currently, like you saw in the slides, we have 454 students. And every year, in both in La Familia and Woodland, we are adding a new class. So Woodland currently is up to the third grade. So next year, they'll be in the fourth grade. So we're adding students to that program. And La Familia is the same way. When we opened La Familia, we only had two K and two first grades. And with every grade, we're adding another new class. So we are expanding that way. We're also expanding at the secondary level. We actually, when we first opened up the middle school program, when we first had the, both the seventh and eighth grade program, we had just 21 students. And right now, this year, we have 47 students at the middle school level alone. We anticipate more students to join that as we are, based on the current numbers at the elementary level, that that number will continue to increase.
Thank you. And then my second question, when we look at world languages now through the chair. So world languages, of course, weren't always thought of as part of, you know, the English learner programs and things like that. But now we call it multilingual programs, and it's all-encompassing. As far as world languages being taught throughout the district, are those happening at all secondary-level schools? And are all of those courses offered at all secondary-level schools? I'm just, I know that there's obviously been a shift away from that a bit with different types of course offerings that students have interested over the years. But I see Latin listed on here, and I knew that, oh, sorry. I knew that Worcester East was doing a partnership at one point, I think, with Holy Cross students, where it was something, students had the option to attend after school. And I didn't know if those classes were actually being taught fully in our secondary schools through the chair.
Just point this.
Through the chair, to member McCullough. So not all those languages are offered in all of our secondary schools. Latin is only offered at Darty. American Sign Language is only offered at Claremont. But French and Spanish are offered at all of our high schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Member Meamie, followed by member Novak.
Just a little further question. Thank you for the presentation. Is there a timeline to the roadmap that we see through the chair to, I'm not sure who?
Ms. Melendez, or the superintendent?
Tag your, no, I'll go ahead and do it. So we want, the reason we didn't put a timeline yet is because we're, we're putting together right now an RFP to find a company to come and do the program audit. Once we have that, our goal is that, you know, we want to be, we're in January. We've got to get this RFP out. And then, before you know it, the end of the year starts to sneak up on us, and you've got to work around MCAS and those kind of things. Because what we do want this, whoever comes for the RFP, is that it's not just a Because what we do want this, whoever comes for the RFP, is that it's not just a look at documents, but they're actually going into schools, talking with people focus groups. So it is our goal that the program audit is done by the end of this school year, so that then we can pull together the work for, work group and then start moving forward.
It seemed that some of the results showed that the dual language programs are really valuable. And I guess I'm just wondering, you mentioned increasing students at Woodland and also at La Familia. You didn't talk about Chandler Magnet, and so I don't know what the goal there would be. And then obviously, there's tremendous room at the high school level to increase programming.
Madam Superintendent?
So, member Mailman, is your question, are we going to keep trying to increase while we do this audit? Like, or, or are we pausing on things?
Right. I mean, is that, is that a stated goal that we know ahead of time?
Yes. We, we will continue to grow our dual programs. There's an interest in it. We know it's good for students. There's tons of research over decades that tells us that. We just also want to look at our, our, the students who are not in those programs, how can we further improve their educational options? So the, what we're currently doing will not pause because of the program audit. It'll, the program audit will only help us to further develop down the road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Menorovik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for the report. When I, I think about sort of where we're at as a district academically, I think that this is one of the areas that, that's most sort of concerning to me. And the first reflection that I have is that, looking at the, the, the population that we have in the district, and honestly, this has been a question that I've had for a while, I really, thinking also partly in terms of my, my understanding of the multi-tiered system of support, this isn't really a department. This is most of our students. And particularly because the state actually thinks of English learners as either English learners or former English learners, and that really, again, is most of our students. So it seems to me that it is kind of an artificial division to think of this as a, a discreet entity, because it's, it's simply most of our kids. And so it's every school and every classroom, and it's everything that we do. And, and far from being disparaging, I actually mean that in terms of the level of import that we as a school committee and as a central administration should put on that, that this is actually really core. And so it encourages administration, as you're, you know, doing the audit, that, that whatever that means in terms of how you need to strategize and arrange things, that you really do that, because I think that's really our responsibility. I do want to reflect, I note that, you know, again, 58.4% of our students are first language other than English. I'm concerned, we, you know, we're running transitional bilingual only in Spanish. Obviously, I see the data there, but wonder if there's support that we should be providing in other languages there. I will just reflect, I think we just heard that French is provided all the high schools, at least from a very sort of realistic, can you actually register for it? It's not, I'll say, as a parent of high school student. I could talk all day about the dual language program, I won't. But I do want to say a couple of things. The first thing I will say, as the parent of a child who has been in dual language literally since kindergarten and is now a high school junior, I'm going to beg of you to please talk to those students and please talk to those families at the secondary level. Because I know that if you look at the numbers, and I'm honestly not really sure that our numbers here are right, because I know that there's nine 11th graders who would very proudly tell you that they're dual language students, and so I'm not sure how the rest of that math would work, since there should be two grades behind them. The reason that those numbers are this low is because there should be a grade of seniors, and when they got to seventh grade, there was no plan for them, and they just vanished. So we effectively, as a district, erased a, a grade of the dual language program. This year, and my colleagues may recall my, making a fairly impassioned statement about this during budget, the 11th graders, we had no plan for. There was, there was only an AP Spanish class, there was nothing else. I don't know about the rest of you, but an AP Spanish class doesn't make a dual language program. So though, some of those students will still very proudly tell you that they're dual language programs, some of them took it upon themselves to find themselves another class. But that's why those numbers are so small. It's, it's on the district, it's on us. And I do mean us, by the way. This is, this is, you know, this is more than all of us. I'm happy to go down paths as to what it's taken some of us to get students to the dual language program at 11th grade, because that wasn't the first or the second time we had to fight to keep the program. But I think it's important for the district to understand, I think the only time that I've come close to yelling at Will Foley was when he said that he was going to try very hard to make sure there was a second class, and I said that it wasn't his job. And I appreciate high school principals who say, it's on me, but it really isn't, it's on us. And so if we're going to say that we have a K through 11 program, then we as a district have to create a K through 11, or pre-K through 11 program. And we haven't actually done that. So before we get too excited about, like, wow, we've got this, whatever, and also before we say, why do we lose people along the way, a lot of that isn't about the families. I said I could talk a lot about that, I'll stop there. I, I do want to note that in terms of the access testing, I am concerned about the fact that we're, whether or not we're effectively moving our students along in terms of level. It seems to me that that's actually the, the main job that we have for, for English learners. I want to note that while the gap closed, the joke, of course, at the state level is you can close gaps one of two ways. One is that the people on the bottom go up, the other is the people on the top go down. The state kind of crashed during the pandemic, so I think we need to be cautious on that. I would like us to focus a, a bunch on that. And in terms of sort of moving forward with the audit, some of the questions that I have, again, going back to this idea that this is every classroom, it seems to me that part of what we have to consider, anytime we're considering curriculum, anytime we're considering anything like that, is that this has to work for both English learners and people who have been, students who have been in English learners, it's, it's got to be core, it's got to be central to it. I would be interested in whether this is the most effective arrangement of reaching these students, you know, reflecting both on what member Mailman said, in terms of what programs work best. I also know that families who choose to put their students in dual language programs may be doing that in part because of their own access to language. Is our curriculum actually appropriate? Are we really supporting across the district? Is our dual language program really pre-K through 12? And are we actually implementing that with fidelity? At some point, I would like to have more information, again, specifically speaking about the dual language program, about how we're doing admission, because my understanding is that that has significantly changed in a way that is really concerning to me. And, and most of all, I, I want to know how we make this a source of strength. Because we've all, I think, been in presentations where someone very proudly stands up and says, Worcester Public Schools have students who speak, and I've heard every number from 100 to 65, I think. But that's kind of where it ends, it's a great little data point. But if we don't actually really make that a strength of, we're actually having students actively be able to pursue and become stronger in all of those languages, whether they speak them at home or not, I, I'm not really sure that we're doing much other than sort of flying that flag. And I think we can do better than, in fact, let me say this, as someone who does not speak Spanish, and now has children who can have arguments over emptying the dishwasher in Spanish, I know that we can do better. I know that we can do better. And, and I really want that for this district, because I think that we have, we have something that we too often are seeing as a negative, that instead, we can be actually building on as an asset. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for another, I think, very solid report here from your administration. You know, I, I just want to say, I, I've been doing this now a little over a year, and, you know, we've gone through a lot, lot of different things, you know, safety and COVID and all this other stuff. I'm really now enjoying this and starting to hear that we are now starting to talk about our students in the academic, and making progress within our district to move our students forward. So again, I continue to look forward to more information on this, on how we're moving our student forward, what the district's goals and plans are to do that work. Because I think that's really what this is about. I think this is what we've all talked about and really want to see happen. And I, I think we have you in place, and you have a great team in place to make that happen, and I'm excited to move forward and do this work. Thank you.
Member Kamara, I apologize, you were next line, Ms. Jissel, sorry.
Thank you. I also just want to comment on the presentation, thank you for the information. I also have similar comments regarding, about the data, so I, I look forward to the audit and seeing what that can, what that would bring about. Compounding the, the comments from my fellow committee members, my specific question and I guess observation is mostly like, how are we moving students up, particularly students who are in the high school level? Because I vividly remember, well, two things. One thing is, if, based on our audit, how are we then going to really capture the amount of students that really do need the help and do need to be in the dual language or multi-language programs in our district? The second item that I want to discuss that is about, or if, content that I would like to discuss about is students who specifically come into our districts with, at the older age, so if they're like in the high school age. And because, and one of the information that you presented was that, most students tend to learn or acquire or teach English within five to seven years. But students who are in the high school level, they don't have that time. So what are we doing to support them? Because I remember being in high school where we had a lot of students who came from other countries and, and some, you know, very brilliant people, students, but they were put in other classes. And I, I'm trying to now paint the picture as I'm hearing you speak, based on all of this category here, perhaps which one of those classes did belong to. But they weren't in classes that I sat in, you know, with the honors courses or, so. So I want to understand, how are we kind of like, you know, maybe developed over the years to ensure that our kids, as, as they're moving up, that they're in these expanded classes? And if they're just coming in at the high school level, that they also have the opportunity to, to be in other expensive, you know, classes and still receiving the support that they deserve?
Thank you, through the chair, to member Kamara. So you're absolutely right, our students at the high school level don't have the luxury of time to learn language. So in one of our goals, and it's in one of our approaches, is to work on explicit language development. So we've engaged in a curriculum, which we didn't have in the past, of English language development for the high school. So we started with the high school for this, one of the reasons was for that, these students don't have a lot of time to develop a language. We, we design, if, if, this is a district design curriculum. We engage in, in a work group for a full year with teachers, different people from various departments. And we're able to develop our own curriculum based on the WIDA 20 standards, and we piloted last year, and this is the first year of implementation at the high school. This curriculum is not only aligned to standards that are, we hoping that accelerates language. When you explicitly teach with standards, you go for the target. Instead of just randomly teaching a lesson, you go with the areas that pertain to language development. The other thing that we included with that is a lot of coaching support to ensure our, our teachers at the high school level are implementing this curriculum. We, in addition, to ensure we are assessing how our students are doing, making sure they're progressing, also develop a common assessment with this curriculum, which we didn't have. This will give us regular view on how our students are developing language, and not just wait for the access scores to come in, in May and June. That's too late, a whole year has passed. But a common assessment done regularly that looks at how our students are learning in their listening, reading, writing, and speaking skills, that could inform instruction and could help the students accelerate, accelerate language. At the high school level, like you mentioned, the, we have some guidance from the Department of Justice around how many minutes students have to take ESL. And at the high school level, we have a pullout self-contained classroom model where students take their ESL as a class. For students at EPL one and two, which you saw who those students are, they have to take two classes of ESL. So that, of any self, takes a chunk of their day that limits them probably in taking other electives. But again, as they progress with language, they take less of ESL, and we certainly promote and encourage our students to take advantage of all the academic opportunities that are available. So that's one way that we're hoping to ensure our students at the high school level accelerate in their language at a faster pace. The other thing we have been working as a district is really firming up our MTSS process, really focusing on that core, tier one core instruction for all classes, not just ESL. But we ensure that in math and science, that tier instruction really considers the language needs of those students, so again, they could access not only content, but also develop that language while they're also learning math or science and social studies. I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions.
Yes. So it's, I think I'm a little bit, I don't know, the, the right word, shocked to learn that we are just now having a curriculum for high school students. I think that's my only remark I have to, to say to that. Thank you.
Through the chair, to member Kamara, a, a lot of districts don't have their own curriculum, but we knew that we needed to have a curriculum to ensure our students have the best high-quality ESL instruction.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the report. Like, member Johnson, just, every week I grow more confident. Okay, there's a lot of challenges, there's no question, to me, but just looking at this report and how it was presented, here's the media, I'm going to meet all our scholars, all our scholars, all 24,000 students, and what they need. So I think we're going in the right direction? I just had a, you might already answered this, on the dual language programs we have, what's the percentage of English as primary language and non-English as their language in the schools? Do you have that?
Just Spanish speaking? Or all the?
In general, like, so people who have their, English is their second language versus English as their first language?
Yeah, I have that here. Be good timing? Yeah. If you want to speak too?
Through the chair, of those 454 students in dual language, currently, 233 of those students are identified as English learners, 97 are former English learners. So that's about a little over 300, I'm not doing the math right away, but
No, I get you.
About three quarters, approximately.
Perfect. I'd like to see this program grow also, so it's good to have that. I just had one other question, more of my district background, I think it was on page 10. This one is shy student proficiency levels, EPL one versus EPL five, just to try, would it be fair to say that each student, as each scholar graduates to the next level, right? So to go from EPL one to EPL two, the only two of the, if they meet the criteria, they go to EPL two, correct?
Through the chair, so that is based on their access scores. Yes, so they're, when they get their access scores back, there is an overall composite score, which is a combination of reading, writing, listening, and speaking, more weighted actually on reading and writing, about 70%, versus 30% listening and speaking. So that, those students may have different levels in reading than writing and speaking and listening, that overall composite combines those, and that's what determines the English proficiency level. So we would expect that they would move up within six years, if they start at one, that they would move up, up the scale to essentially they would move up, up the scale to essentially six.
Would it be fair, is some way to say that EPL one, the 1,600 students, is somewhere is, would it be a high percentage with their first year in the Worcester Public Schools?
Yes, for many of them.
Interesting. And how come, is there a correlation on EPL five, the numbers to go down? Is that because people age out of the elementary and go into the high schools? Are those numbers reflected in the high schools? Or is it in the students that age out of school and graduate?
So the, the state determined criteria for attaining English language proficiency, a student has to score a 4.2 overall and a 3.9 in literacy. At that point, school-based teams also look at other local data to determine if they're going to reclassify the students, if the student's ready to be reclassified as a former English learner. So most students, once they hit 4.2 and three, overall, 3.9 in literacy, do end up being reclassified. So they're not represented here. So, because they're not identified as current English learners.
Okay.
Though they may have scored higher than 4.2, in many cases they do.
Understood. Just going back to the 1,600 students, I just, for first year as a high percentage, would that be Spanish-speaking or would it be all different languages? Or I just want to make sure we meet, as immigrants come into the city, are we meeting their demands as a community and also as the Worcester Public Schools? 16 is a high, like, no, I know, right now, the budget loves the high numbers coming in for the October 1st deadline, but are we meeting those students? 1,600 is the last students, I would think, right? Try to meet their demands and, I'm just saying, I'm pretty confident that we will. And we have a strategy and so I just want to thank you for the report, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just follow up on one of the points you made?
Sure.
Thank you. So you actually touched on something that I was, was wondering about. I'm sorry, did you say that about three-quarters of the students in the dual language program are either English learners or former English learners?
Correct.
Okay. So when we, when we reestablished the dual language program, which before Woodland, before we got into secondary, the school committee had to establish admission processes, because we always have to establish an admission process, that's a policy, so at the school committee level. And the, the, the standard was that the, the, the classes would be more or less, first language English, first language Spanish, 50/50, more or less. If that were to change, it had to come back to the school committee, because that's a policy change. Admission policy is made at the school committee level. I do not recall that change actually being done at the school committee level. Is it possible through the chair administration that someone could clarify how it is that we're doing this and when that change took place? And perhaps my memory simply is faulty as to that change being voted?
Ms. Melendez?
Through the chair to member O'Connell Novick. So you're talking about the admission process to the dual language program. So prior, a few years ago, there used to be a screening process for students, which was done by each school, done by teachers and screened kindergarteners. When we started looking deeper at our best practices for our dual language programming and looking and aligning our programs to best practices of dual language programming, we saw that there was a lack of access, even though we had English learners, we had a lack of access of students at EPL one and two at the dual language program. We saw that as a huge inequity. As a matter of fact, when I first came in in 2018, only 2% of Ls in dual language program were at EPL one and two. When we looked deeper at why, it was that screening process that were, that was reading out students at EPL one and two. And the explanation I gathered at the time is that that was, screening was done in place because we want to make sure we got the right students in the program. So it was treated like an elite program that was students with certain skills could benefit from the program. So when we started looking at that data, we, we knew we had a big inequity issue and access issue for our multilingual students. As we started expanding our information session, more families were demanding access, more access. And we really needed to come up with an equitable process. So we started looking at other districts that have established dual language programs and they have a lottery system. At that point, we didn't make a decision. What we decided to do was to create a working group of teachers from Roseville at the time, Charlie Magnette, both of the principals, and we consulted with the executive director of multiling, Multi-State Multilingual Education Institution and as a consultant for that work. And based on the working group recommendations to the district, that was the recommendation, a lottery system based on best practices in the field, what established successful programs do, and to remove the barriers. Because EPL ones and twos were not through that screening process, were not, were not given access to the program. And, and through the lottery, we are ensure we have a bucket that is for Spanish-speaking students regardless of their EPL level. They should have dual language programs created for those students and they were not taking advantage. At the, at the time, it was not requested that was, it would be presented as a policy. But nevertheless, we did present in June 2021 like this, a report of a superintendent in June 2021, changes that were happening in the structures of the program. I certainly support any policy that disrupt disparities for our multilingual students and personally believe would be very powerful if we vote on a policy that is a policy that ensures equity for all of our multilingual students.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm familiar with best practices in the field, because I've been following this for some time for perhaps obvious reasons. The equity concerns extend be, far beyond that which has just been presented. Certainly, first of all, to students who actually speak only a single language rather than speaking two languages. Also, the notion that we effectively are tiering within the Spanish-speaking is problematic. I will say that I actually went to the presentation to parents about how to enter the dual language program. It was presented in my first language and I had a very difficult time following it with the notion that there are now three buckets and we are gonna, we are ending up with, with what clearly is an incredible imbalance in the system. I completely understand, because I've been following the field closely, that there is always the danger that a dual language program does become an elite program that is primarily in home speakers of English. That has never been the danger here in Worcester. What in fact is more the danger in Worcester is that this effectively becomes a program that is only seen as for Spanish speakers rather than actually being a cross-cultural or even more than cross-cultural, multicultural because of the number of students that we have involved in it. So I'm, I'm, these are the kinds of questions that should have been brought forward to this committee. That is a policy that has to be adopted by this committee in order for it to be, actually be implemented. And so I would flag with concern that I hope that this is not actually how we're doing admission this year to the dual language program, because this is not a policy that's actually been adopted by this committee. So I will leave that to the administration's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for being here tonight and, oh, what's the question? Oh, I'm sorry, member Kamara?
Thank you through the chair. If I can, if you can just help me here with the, to the, to the administration, i- is there a way that we can get the old, you know, because as a new school committee member, I would like to understand if we can get the old policy, wherever that may be, so that we can see what it is? You know, and then, because, you know, because as I'm hearing is that we need to adopt a newer, a new one. So I would, I would like to know, because I have not seen anything, I'm a new person here.
Sure.
You know, to see what that is. So I would like to ask for that, please.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Yeah, through the chair. Yes, absolutely, we will give you the policy. What I'm hearing is, it's actually not an old policy, it's the policy that's been adopted. So we need to, we need to get that to you, we need to make sure that we are adhering to that. And then if there are any recommendations, then we bring that back to, to this committee to then move it forward to governance. The, so we will definitely pull up that policy and take a look at it. And I, I appreciate the conversation. I do want to say, Mayor, that I did catch that you are now referring to our scholars as scholars, so bravo. But also, it is, the, the audit will help with all of this as well, right? So the purpose of a dual immersion program is twofold, right? It's to meet the needs of our children who are coming in with a primary language other than English, as well as provide access to those who English is their only language and we want them to be multilingual as well, right? And so we have many, many children that can really benefit from this. This is what we want to be able to grow and we want to see i- if indeed these are existing policies or practices are creating unintentional barriers. We want to take care of that. That's what part of this, this program audit will do. Because we don't do anything in the district that's intentional to limit families or children, but sometimes we need outside eyes to, to help us look at that. So long answer to say absolutely, we will pull that up, we will take a look at it and, and more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman?
I'm sorry, one more clarification. We're going to start with the original policy that was approved by this committee and then go to whatever we're doing now. Is that right? Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And maybe in the letter, a Friday letter or an email, I just wanted to get a breakdown of 1,660 students of their home languages and just give me a reflection, because this is a reflection of the community. And I would guess a lot of these new students maybe be Portuguese-speaking?
Yes.
I would think. And it'd be nice to know what the breakdown is, okay? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Nicely done.
All right. So motions accepted and filed, all is in favor, opposed, so ordered. And also, any reports asked for by school committee members? Also, all is in favor, opposed, so ordered. And now we are on, Mr. Student Advisory Committee Items.
I wanted to bring up the possibility of making menstrual products more accessible for our students, more specifically by having them available directly in the bathroom setting. At a recent student representative meeting, we found that many students at our respective schools shared a desire for easier access to menstrual, menstrual products during the school day. As of right now, the standard is for students to receive these products by going to the nurse's office. However, this method is often not discreet and supply is very limited. Some of our high schools have added carts within their bathrooms that are stocked with menstrual products, enabling students to access them quickly and privately. If we implement these in more schools and scale them out, we can provide a simple solution to support a comfortable environment for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that's the former report, all is in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. We are on approval of grants and finance items, GB 3-37. The city approval of fiscal year 2023 Stiles Residency Grant for the Worcester High School in the amount of $5,950 administered by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Our vice chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, to consider the approval of fiscal year 2023, FC 181, English education support in the amount of $421,326 from the Southern School and District Partnerships, DSE, approval on the roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, to consider the approval of job description of the physical security system administrator. Any questions? Approve on the roll call.
Question.
Member?
She may.
Okay, member Clancy?
Thank you. So through the chair, I do actually have a couple of questions about this. So I'm trying to figure out if this is going to be one particular person who's going to oversee this at every school, because I see that they're doing some maintenance, but yet they're working with inside people and outside people. I just, I'm trying to get a grasp on, is this currently being done? Who's doing it and the need for this position?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So as part of the FY23 budget, we added eight positions to the IT department. This is one of those eight positions. There'll be, there were two network support positions added in the FY23 budget, new position, but included in the budget. Right now, it's kind of done ad hoc. As we're expanding the number of cameras, as we're expanding the number of access controls in schools, that does require coordination, planning, and maintenance. We expect the need for this support is going to be in our safety audit that's ongoing. And that's why in the FY23 budget, we've assigned, we've assigned two positions for building physical security and safety within the IT department. This one and there's a, there'll be another position also supporting cameras, access controls, videos, and so forth. Right now, to do it effectively, we do believe it needs this level of attention and support because it's pulling away from other network work that's being done, that's needed to be done within the department.
Thank you.
So, member Johnson?
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I think I'm good. I'm, I'm reading now, trying to get the answer that he just gave, and I had the same questions that member Clancy had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Approve on the roll call?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, to consider the approval of the job description of the Workday Implementation Specialist. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually am going to ask a kind of more or less the same question that member Clancy asked about this position. I, I understand where it falls in terms of the org chart. Is this a position that we actually effectively have already approved a slot for? Or is this something that we are potentially filling with temporary funds until it comes forward in a future budget? Through the chair.
Through, through the chair to member O'Connell Novick.
So this is a new position. However, we're, the way we're funding it is we're putting a pause on other already approved finance and operations positions. So we, there were some new positions in finance and operations that we have not filled. So we're using that funding for the remainder of this year to fund this position. As the city is implementing Workday, the new product for financial management, ERP system, we recognize the level of training that is going to be needed throughout all 50 schools and all departments. And it is going to require a person over the next three or five years to coordinate all of that training and the number of staff that needs to, to be trained. This is a complete change in the way we will be doing everything from requisitions and payroll and HR functions compared to the way we've been using the current system since 1996. It is going to require perhaps even more than this as we roll out more features and functions. This is to start. The city is going live on accounts payable and procurement, originally in February, now it looks like it's in March. And so this will coordinate all the training that we need to do with the departments and schools going forward. And again, for the remainder of this year, we'll be, we'll be using a position that we haven't filled in finance and operations.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I, the only other thing I mentioned was actually praise the administration for being proactive on this, because, I mean, it, we can say nice things about how, you know, the work of the district rests on the budget office, but that's actually kind of almost a literal thing. And this is exactly the kind of thing, it strikes me that if we didn't, if we weren't proactive, no one would notice until suddenly everything was collapsing. So appreciate the proactive nature of the item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to say something? Ma'am Superintendent?
Yeah, actually through the chair, in, not, not in response to, just to add to what member O'Connell Novick just shared, this position is really part of this continuous improvement culture that we are practicing in Worcester Public Schools. The rollout of Wu edu really showed us that probably needed to be a bit more proactive in that area. Our Our t- teams at our schools are feeling it. Things are getting better, but we don't want to replicate that with a new system that has to do with payroll and, but, um, those kind of things, right? So, um, so I, I too want to commend the business, um, side of the House for being proactive and really practicing continuous improvement. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. So, we'll take this on the roll call. Roll call.
Remember Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Remember Kamara?
Yes.
Remember Mailman?
Yes.
Remember McCullough?
Yes.
Remember O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next is authorize administration to enter into an agreement for the lease space for up to nine years for the district's special education alternate school. Any questions? Remember Mailman? Followed by remember Clancy?
Can, can we take these next two items together? I don't know if remember Clancy is, just had questions on the first one? Okay. All right, then I'll stick to the first one. So, the first one, this, um, is a really interesting process here with these leases, which I called you about, and you were gracious enough to respond to my questions. But, so if we Saint Casmire's, we know we're re-upping at Saint Casmire's. Or are we going out for bid to whoever? So, this is an open pro-
Through the chair, it's an open bid process.
And we are, okay, so then I'll ask my questions at the same time, so that I don't have to stand up twice. So, Fanning Building Two, we, we, all we're authorizing is you not to, we don't have an RFP that we're approving. We're just saying, um, yeah, go ahead, go find us some space. That is a weird thing to approve without the context of the bigger picture when we have as many buildings as we do. Do we know we're leaving Saint Casmire's? Through the chair?
Mr. Allen?
So, technically, we wouldn't know. However, the bids opened yesterday, and there was only one bidder, and it was not Saint Casmire's.
It was not?
So, but we have not reviewed the RFP yet to see if that space meets our need.
Yeah, and you're, you're, you're able to accept a bid, e- even if there's only one bid, so long as it hits, sure?
Yes.
Criteria?
Criteria, correct.
Okay. And then, um, does this, does the other bid? So, we're not going to hear about this again, are we?
Through the chair, you're going to hear it probably multiple times, either through quarterly reporting and in the budget process, where the lease would be, um, included in the FY twenty-four budget. But certainly, we'd make it part of any quarterly updates in the meantime. Um, if I can just step back, I know you and I have had a conversation, but just to make sure that we're all aware of what the request here and why. The, any contract that we enter into that exceeds three years, by law, has to be approved by the legislative body, school committee, to enter into a contract greater than three years. And that is what our request is, is to enter into a lease agreement greater than three years. That's what you're authorizing, we're asking you to authorize the administration to do. So, that's the case in both of these leases. Because it's also involving property. It will also require city council approval down the road.
Okay, and through the chair, we entered into lease agreements, for example, at Saint Stevens or with the Becker Buildings?
So, through the Saint Stevens, we did a similar process with the school committee. They authorized us to enter into the lease. That's a five-year lease. The Becker Property, we actually purchased, the city has purchased those buildings.
Right, okay. So, school committee had no play in that?
Not in the Becker, correct.
And city has control over those buildings, not school committee? Or was, was, I thought the intent was for schools to use those buildings?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair?
So, yes, through the chair. The intent is for us to use one of those two buildings, but we're still meeting with the city and working out all of those details. We expect to be using the Weller Academic, what was the Weller Academic Building, sometime during this calendar year.
And could any of those buildings accommodate these two requests?
So, we're only, through the chair, only one of the two buildings is allocated for those other schools. We currently have other programs slated to go into that building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, remember Clancy, followed by remember Kamara? You're all set, remember Kamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to know a follow-up question about, uh, just out of curiosity. Like, which programs are we slated for that, for the Becker Building? You said all the programs.
So, right, through the chair, right now, the, um, adult education program that's currently at Fanning is scheduled to go to Becker.
Correct. Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Um, through the chair, that's, uh, that's a su- we're still, to what Mr. Allen said. So, this is what's, it, there's still moving parts, right? So, we're still in conversation with our city manager about, um, that building and, and actually us accessing it. Things might, there, there's more to it. We're, we're talking broader picture right now with our city managers. So, we've got a few needs, they have needs. We're going to sit down, we have a meeting already scheduled. And so, when we, um, play it all out, I just don't want people walking away saying for sure adult, um, transition is going there, when perhaps it might look a little bit different. We'll still get what we need, it just may be in a different location. So, we're, we're working through these moving parts.
Remember Clancy?
So, thank you. So, through the chair, since it was brought up, um, I know that Ms. Novick, um, this, remember Novick has been there also, and I know we've visited it. I, I do know that we strongly need a new facility for our adult learning center. So, and I'm, it may not be the Becker Building, but we definitely need to advocate that that program gets moved somewhere. Thank you.
That was the deal.
Yeah, through the chair, we concur a hundred percent. So, there, we will be finding a location. I just, if something changes for some reason, and we're, it's somewhere else, I don't want that to be, you know, kind of left there, right? So, as of now, that's, that's what was said to us. When we sit down with them in a couple of weeks, actually, with our city manager, it's kind of like moving pieces on a chessboard, right? That's all. But we agree.
Okay. So, we can take three dash three one on a roll call? Roll call.
Remember Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Remember Kamara?
Yes.
Remember Mailman?
Yes.
Remember McCullough?
Yes.
Remember O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, three dash three two, to authorize administration to enter into an agreement to lease space for up to twenty years for the district's special ed transitions program. Remember, uh, Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm just wondering, um, why this one is for a different length of time?
Mr. Allen?
Through, through the chair, um, so we know that the current space at Fanning Building is inadequate, inadequate to house the transition program because of growing, um, enrollment needs. We don't think there's going to be capacity in any other building to accommodate them in the near future. We believe that entering into contract of this term, if there's any build-out costs, can be extended over a longer period of time, reducing our costs on an annual basis. So, we do believe we're going to need this facility for at least the initial ten years with two, five-year optional renewals. We believe we can get it more cost-effective if we do for a longer term.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Fanning's not on the agenda, but just want to put a word in there that some of us aren't necessarily on board with abandoning ship. Thanks.
Oh, you gotta love it. Okay, roll call.
Remember Clancy?
Yes.
Remember Johnson?
Yes.
Remember Kamara?
Yes.
Remember Mailman?
Yes.
Remember McCullough?
Yes.
Remember O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Sorry, yes. Okay. Uh, he's a, who's this, three, four years in the running? To authorize administration to resubmit the statement of interest to Massachusetts School Building Authority for Bunkel High School, district priority partner for major renovation or replacement for twenty twenty-three. We're going to push this one hard this year. So, we are going to take this on a roll call. Roll call.
Remember Clancy?
I'm proud to do so. You want to speak, uh?
Yeah, just, um, probably weird to say, but can we just correct, um, uh, is this the one? I'm talking about? Hmm?
What's that?
On, on the CC part, um-
No, it's, this is from them. They spread it out.
Who, is it?
The letters, I can send the MSW.
Okay. All right, that's fine. So, it wasn't on us, so that's fine. Sorry.
Okay. Roll call.
Remember Clancy?
Yes.
Remember, uh, remember Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Remember Kamara?
Yes.
Remember Mailman?
Yes.
Remember McCullough?
Yes.
Remember O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, three dash three-
Mr. Chair, point of order. Is it possible for us to actually get this on the council agenda for Tuesday if we vote reconsideration? Or, it's not a rush, we have till April. You know me, though, let's get it in there. But I don't know if there's time enough for that.
This would go with, this would go on the clerk's agenda, not the council or the manager. So, it's possible to get on there.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to do that? There probably, there might, you might need to-
I think we just submit the, we still have, what's today, Thursday?
Yeah.
Put the letter by Friday, we're all set to go. And send that to him.
So, we have to do, we have to do reconsideration, because otherwise, Dr. Frill can't submit it until Monday.
So, moment, okay, so motion to reconsider?
Remember Clancy?
Yes.
No.
Well, according to our rules, which is very complicated on this matter, we're going to, the first is the motion that we, um, are going to reconsider, we're going to- to go to the reconsideration. So, remember, Clancy is correct on her vote. So, uh-
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Remember Kamara?
Yes.
Remember Mailman?
Yes.
Remember McCullough?
Yes.
Remember O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next motion is for reconsideration itself. Roll call.
Remember Clancy?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Remember Kamara?
No.
Remember McCullough?
No.
Remember Mailman's a no, too? No.
Thank you. Um, remember O'Connell Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. That'd be interesting if someone had some time, maybe resent us a rule change and, uh, maybe in governance, or wherever that might go, and take a look at that, and do what the city council does. This was done because of one bad vote taken over twelve years ago. They changed the rules, and maybe we can change it back to make it a little more simpler on the, uh, on this, on the reconsideration. Okay. Next item up is three dash three four, to explore streaming options for athletics and activities and either develop an in-house process or send it out to bid for district-wide options to be put in place as soon as possible. Remember McCullough?
Thank you, and I know that we had our parents speak tonight. There were also some athletic liaisons that were hoping to call in, but I don't know if the timing of the meeting shifting adjusted that, that wanted to express their support as well. I know this is something that we began really looking at last year. The item that was filed wasn't appropriate the way that it was filed, and that this is something that if a streaming system is selected, we know would have to go out. I think an RFP or out to bid. I don't want to speak incorrectly about how that process would work, but in addition to the importance of streaming for athletics, it's also vital for many of our other extracurricular activities, including our arts, our drama, our dance, school presentations, and things of that nature. And not only is it beneficial for families that might not be able to attend an event so that they can participate virtually, but for a lot of our students as they are preparing to potentially go off to college, this is something that can be utilized for them, whether it's for dance, drama, football, basketball, volleyball, track, different things that we're able to do as far as streaming goes. And I know there are a variety of options out there. So, I would ask that this is something that administration comes up, um, you know, whether an option of it going out to bid, or what the case may be, and present it to. I believe it would have to go to finance after that for some consideration as far as budgeting goes. I did include the concept of in-house process. I don't know that that's as, would be as efficient to get something done sooner, but that maybe is something that we could look at down the road, too, where there may be students that are involved in some type of television production at schools and utilize services that way. Some districts do it like that. I just want to make sure that we're doing something sooner rather than later on this. Thank you.
Okay, so we refer it out to State Committee on Teaching and Learning? Not you want it to the administration?
I think it would have to go to finance, but I think administration would need to come up with the, some options.
Send it to administration?
Just send it to F and O, we'll, sorry. You can send it to us.
If we could send it to F and O, but I, I know that superintendent and administration will work on some options for them to then bring back to us, so that we get that ball rolling.
Page then? Okay. All is in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay, we're next on three dash three nine, from the administration. Pursuant to the Massachusetts general law and the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee hereby authorizes the appointment of Ian Dolly, Zetessia, and Cronin PC as the accounts for the city of Worcester, Worcester Public Schools. The sole purpose of conducting legal services is to secure H one B visa for an existing employee for the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. Yeah. Remember, remember, uh, McCullough?
I know this is unusual for me to ask a, a question on an item like this. Typically, it would be across the way for me. Um, I'm just curious, this, through the chair, to the superintendent, is this something that we typically do? Uh, is this a unique situation? I'm just not sure that I've recalled something like this coming up before. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Fifth chair, so this is a unique situation, but because we're hiring legal counsel, it does require, just like all the other legal counsel that we hire, require, needs school committee approval to do the contract.
Thank you.
And these people specialize in this, or is that? Okay. Remember Kamara?
Thank you, through the chair, I just need some clarification on this. Um, is it that we're, we are saying that we need to pay this company this amount of money to be able to secure this H one B visa? Or what is the understanding?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, yes, they do all the application paperwork necessary for the, um, H one B visa.
Okay, so that-
On behalf of the district. We're the sponsor for the employee.
I would think so. Okay. All set? I'm sorry.
No, no, I guess like my other, I'm, I'm just trying to, um, understand here. So, that, that means that we have, like, um, employee, employees who are on or using H one. Is there a number of the-
Current, number of-
Of current, like, employees that are on?
Currently, there is one.
Thank you.
All set? Everybody? We should do a roll call anyways, so we're in, uh, so, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. To view and update, if necessary, the social media policy. Uh, this is, um, member Clancy. The recommendation is to go to governance.
As it reads.
Listen at the governance. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Member Kamara, to explore review of the, uh, the certified nursing assistant job and salary to conduct review of similar CNA positions in similar school districts. Uh, member Kamara?
Thank you, as it reads.
Okay. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that the superintendent spoke of this, uh, meeting or so ago and my understanding was that we don't actually independently hire CNAs, that it's actually a contractual service. Was that correct through the chair to administration?
Mr. Allen?
Through, through the chair, so a couple of years ago, we, um, created a clinical care coordination within the school nurse, uh, section of the budget. Where we hire LPNs and CNAs to do one-to-one services for our students. We're also using contracted services for medical waiting rooms, um, during COVID. So we're using both. So we do have our own employees, but we're also contracting out services for medical waiting rooms.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair, the, in terms of purview, the only piece of this that's actually under the purview of the school committee would be a job description of the CNA. We do not, under Massachusetts general law, actually have the ability to set salaries for employees beyond the small handful of employees that I think we're all familiar with. Um, and if there is a reason for that, um, that sort of comparison to take place for non-rep, that would be internal to the administration, would not be brought forward to the school committee unless there was some reason we needed it. So unless, if my colleague would like to amend this to simply talk about reviewing the position, um, which I think would belong to, properly belong to governance, that is fine. Otherwise, we really should file this item because it is outside of our purview. Um, and I, I will, um, make the motion to file, um, unless there is a motion to amend. Thank you.
So proposals to amend to take the word salary out, but to conduct a review. Um, member Kamara?
Thank you, to the chair. Thank you. I will, um, approve or agree to that amendment for the job description, um, but also the, uh, description here was not about, um, whatever my colleague just mentioned about salaries. I would like if that, that job description, um, can come with some data in terms of like what my item is actually asking for us to review, um, salary. Data, numeric data comparison, in comparison to other districts. Thank you.
Okay. Also, member Novick?
Mr. Chair, in which case I would, I would stay with the motion to file because we, again, that is outside of our purview. We, it is not appropriate for us to be conducting that kind of a review. If we were in negotiations with a collective bargaining unit, um, and we're going to do that in executive session, that's something that is under our purview. But in the context in which this is being presented, that would not actually be under our purview.
So amended, so you, you have a motion to amend, you have a motion to file. The first motion to take the precedent would be motion to amend. I believe that's correct. And, uh, so the motion to amend is first. That's the, yes.
So could we just point a clarification and get exactly what the amendment is?
The amendment, I think, was to get the job description of the, uh, C, was it CNA positions similar to other school districts?
Yes.
And also, uh, did you mention salaries again in that or?
Um, yeah, so my question with salary was about, basically, what are other, um, districts doing for, um, understanding purposes, not for policy purposes?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Okay. As amended first, if that fails, we'll go to the, well, I guess it fails anyways, but, um... Roll call.
Member Clancy?
No.
Member Johnson?
I'm sorry.
So this is on member Kamara's motion to amend to ask for the job description also what other districts are doing for salary.
Okay, no.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
The amendment was to exclude the word salary, correct?
No.
So there is no, is there an amendment or not?
She's asking for the, uh, job description part of it.
So that is an amendment?
Yeah.
And the job description is under our purview, yes?
Still includes salary.
Yeah, we're moving on.
All right, no.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Yes.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. We are, so that fails. So the other item is to file the item completely. And, uh, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we're going to review the steps of accessing, accessing accommodation service for students on IEP per the Individual and Disability Education Act. Idea in the rose at the administration, parent guardians. Member Kamara?
Thank you. I, to the, um, to the chair, I wanted to ask a question, but I guess I would probably ask that after, but my other item.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. You want to go back?
Yeah, I have my hand up, but you're reading, so it's okay. So I would just, um, probably talk to the administration after that, but my other item, because I will bring that back with the amendment. Thank you. Um, so my, um, the item now that we just read, I will, it's as it reads.
As it reads?
Yeah.
Okay, so the member, the motion is as it reads. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first, I believe we're talking about the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is IDEA. Um, I, I want to applaud my colleague for her interest in this. Um, but again, this actually is not an item under the purview of the school committee. In fact, it's not even an item really that's under the purview of the district. This is, we're talking about federal regulation at this point. Um, and reviewing the steps of accessing accommodation is certainly something that we can do, for example, in the context of a SPED PAC report or something of that nature. Um, but there really, there's no grounds for this to be something under the school committee. And under Rule 25, um, items that are filed by school committee members need to be under the purview of the school committee and focused on the business of the committee. Um, and, and thus, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to file.
So the motion is to file?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Before the file, I'm sorry, let's see, member Kamara, see end up.
Thank you. So I actually wanted to refer my item to the administration, um, so for, for clarifications.
The motion is to refer it to the administration?
Yeah. That was my item.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to file?
To file?
Well, we can, okay, if the motion to file fails, the motion then is to send it to administration, correct? Did I hear that right or?
Um, ideally, my, both of my items, um, will be going to the administration because the question was to the administration.
The question was what to?
The item that I filed, um, was to refer to the administration.
Yeah, it says teaching and learning, but, okay. But, but right now, the motion is to file. If that fails, then it will go to the administration. Okay, okay. Member McCullough, did you have a question?
I think maybe I was just looking for clarification. I know we have the motion on the floor to file, so I don't know if that trumps.
No, can you get clarification?
And through the chair for member Kamara, is it that you're just looking for the administration to explain how accommodations work? Because I think I'm understanding what member Novick is saying as far as that being a non-school committee purview and perhaps that's a separate meeting with administration. So I'm just trying to gain clarification around that through the chair.
Okay. Member Kamara?
Yes, thank you. So my item is to review the steps of assessing accommodation services for students on IEP per the IDA and specifically to know the role of the administration and also the role of parents and guardians. So my item, um, ideally was to go to administration.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, I, I think this is one of those gray areas in my mind. Well, I'm easygoing Joe is my problem, but the, uh... Like, if you're just asking for a background on how this all works, I have no problem with that. Is that what you're asking for or?
Not on like how the policy works.
Yeah.
But as a district, how are we, um, how are we, how have we or are we working that policy as the, as an administration and also what is that, um, requirement also for, what are parental requirements or guarded requirements, um, for their own kids?
Okay. Um, Madam Superintendent?
So if I may, um, through the chair, the plan on the next, um, report of the superintendent is to do very similar to what we just did tonight for our multilingual, to do that for our special needs students. And so with that, um, we can incorporate, um, some of this information in there.
Okay. That's fair that we can file this then?
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. The motion is to file. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Okay. To review the process of students needing accommodation for extra time for exams or tests. Member Kamara?
Yeah, so that, um, second item also followed the first one and is mostly just to kind of get understanding in terms of how are we, um, supporting the students, um, who may need extra support on testing, whether they are English learners and they have other disabilities, but like meaning to know, understand like how are we, um, supporting students? So if that is going to be in the report, um, that would be great.
Through the chair to member Kamara. So we will, because the next report will be about, um, special needs students, we can definitely incorporate the, um, accommodations and how that's selected for, um, assessments. It will not include the multilingual students unless they're dual identified. So, um, but it will definitely, we can talk about how our testing accommodations are identified, yes.
Okay. So the motion, we can file that? Or those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Okay. Next item? To review public reporting of health data in absence of COVID is still prevalent in the city. Uh, member Mailman?
Thank you. Um, I'll be brief. So we, we had a kind of a weird vote in my mind and I, you know, I think there's still, I would want to say that even with, um, member Kamara's, um, couple of motions and frankly with me on this one, I think there's still a sense of confusion about what, um, what items are legitimate or not. And it, it's a bizarre thing to me to just say, I, I don't know why it's so confusing. It shouldn't be. Um, so we had this other motion that wasn't really a motion like some of the other things that come on that came before us and it was voted down to stop reporting on COVID. And that was December 15th. And then we go to Christmas and then we watch our UMass Hospital go up again and then we see wastewater numbers go up again. And we're, and I am just stunned that we don't want, as I believe that we have 80 to 85% of school-aged children that are part of this district. And I think our public reporting of the, of COVID, of our absences would be hand in hand what the Department of Public Health in this city would be looking for. And I would think and hope that we would want to be partners with the city on public health information. And so I put it back on. I was going to say, okay, don't say COVID, just say absences because I'm not sure of the rules either. But, um, I think this is an important item and I think that we have talked on this committee for the short year that I've been on about mental health, physical health, challenges. These, these are not going to go away and the absences of students and staff are important indicators and I would like us to, the administration, to reconsider, um, our public reporting of that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Thank you. I, I would just like a motion to file this item. Thank you.
I have a motion to file. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I appreciate the administration coming forward with the amended minutes because I think we actually have an answer to at least potentially part of the quandary here. Um, at the meeting on December 15th, there were actually three motions made, um, which was, um, Vice Chair Johnson's motion to file. There was a motion to amend that by member Mailman. And then there was a motion by member Clancy. Um, and that's the one that actually hasn't effectively reappeared. Um, and the motion from member Clancy was that we still get the reporting, but that it not actually be coming to the school committee. And it was sort of left to the administration to determine how it was for that to happen, whether it was through the newsletter as suggested in the minutes. And there were other things that were noted about dashboards and there being other kinds of things that people do. Um, so I, I, I think that there's potentially less of a disagreement here as it initially appears because effectively the school, the majority of the school committee agreed that, yes, we still need to get reporting. Just how that was happening was changing. Um, and that just hasn't happened and we understand that, you know, things get lost in the wash and so forth. Um, so I would suggest to my colleagues that whether or not, um, member Mailman's motion here goes forward, that there effectively is already a standing order asking for a report.
Correct. You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion is to file. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
I'm, I'm sorry. Kamara, I didn't see your hand.
That was a whole mouthful. Um, I'm just asking or trying to understand for this item, if it's going to be publicly provided to us, if it's going to be, because I think that's the confusion that I still have.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so I could swear that the last school committee meeting, that Friday, I put it in that update, but maybe not. But I, I thought I did and I thought we put it up on the website, but it will be there tomorrow. So what you can plan on is whenever we have a school committee meeting, that Friday, you'll get the updated numbers for those last two weeks. Then also on the website, we currently have it under important information. And then when you scroll, there's a part that says something about COVID numbers or something like that. And so we put it under there. Now, that's the first place we put it. It doesn't have to be the standing place. If the, um, committee prefers to have it up on the landing page, we can absolutely do that. What I'm trying not to do is have our landing page get so messy that things get lost there. Um, but if, if that would be a desire, we can definitely look into that. So cadence-wise, you will always get it the Friday after our meeting together and it also then goes up on the website, that same document. It's not as, mm, 21st century as I would like it to be at this time, um, but it at least gives the current numbers that I was reading out before.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion is to file. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yeah.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. To consider amending of the out-of-state, country, field trip policy, the motion is to send that to governance. Any questions? All those in favor, opposed, so ordered? And, uh... Maybe not. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered.